With that being said, Chair, we want to welcome all of you here. And we believe that our communities, as well as our councilors, are going to participate in beefing up the bill and also making corrections where there is a need. So that as you take back the bill to Parliament and pass it into a proper legislation, the contributions would have been kept. And then it is a bill that is seeking to address all issues as per the process of consultation. Thank you very much, Sia Namgela, in Kangaala, in Malacheni. Sia Bokke.
Gafusha. Esikshoyo u guti indawo yitu, indawo enezintezinbiwa pans. Manje sifisukutilezizindo mazaviwe gasheng'ugnenzelili, u guze wa kega matuba umsebeenz. Manje jongo banila pake, nifigile nizo zvagashela. Sia tembo guti amakanzela na bobonka ba tindegaayo, bazo faki saanla. U guzumase nmbuye le movea, kulumtecho zvivinyo. Nibuye le nezinto enfige nazitola lapenda weni agiti, easen Kangaala.
Thank you very much. I will then ask the Chief Whip to introduce councilors that are here.
Again, elege usoswepuguba ezige etule amakanzela akona lapo.
Good morning, everyone. Morning to the Chaperes and all members of the Parliament. Ah. I'm saying good morning to the Chaperes of the committee. Also greetings to the members of the Parliament. Greetings to our honourable acting Executive Mayor from the district and all protocol observed.
Itangbingelele, nje bonka bantaba kona lapo, ngbingelele usalo, ngbingelele ama lungu e committee. Ngbingelele nelungu elbambele, nje ngemea elkona kule district yetu. Nitikinonke, nje ngianngbingelela.
We are in our meeting, we are having the ward councilor here, ukancela Unombuso. Unombuso, can you please greet?
Sine, councilor Unombuso.
And without any waste of time, I'll request all councilors from Imalacheni to stand up and wait for the community and the...
Ngapandle, nje kritiskati, nje la wonka amakanzela u kubasuguume, besi eparamisa izanla, ngbingelele, uze swaboa.
All councilors from Imalacheni, can you please stand up? Councilor Mahir, can you please stand up? I know you all. Okay, no, thank you. Those are our councilors.
Na woga amakanzela, no abonise.
Um, I'm now going to release the ward councilor and the acting mayor to train their people so that we proceed with our...
Agie ma mbate teele, councilor, kanyene bambela, mayor u kubalibe pagatwa bantu.
Um, as I've requested before... As I've requested before... As I've requested before, that Parliament is in session, we therefore request you that let's listen to one another so that we can then be able to proceed with the proceeding of the Parliament.
Jongo abengtalele ngapambili, nzo tela u kuba silalelaane, ngoba iparlamentiliya kubega. Uze skuazifutu kubegela pambili, ngsebeenzio sugula namusha.
Um, because majority of you, you have not attended the workshop, I'm going to try and summarize the bill.
Ngenwa u kutabani ngbe, nubabe ngene, kongeskati sine workshop, eskati neselule, nzo ti njo gunke la pezu.
Um, as I've indicated, that we are here in Malacheni to come and so let's see your views on the Housing Consumer Protection Bill.
Jango ba ngshilo guti silape Malacheni, uze stolu volue nu, ngalo mtecho segelo, kfigelo gama kasmende ezinlu.
The housing con... Sorry, I'm going to summarize the purpose of the bill.
Nzo ti, gafusha nje, ngitrazin jongo yalo mtecho segelo.
The Housing Consumer Protection Bill of 2021 seeks to repeal the Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998.
Lomtecho segelo, kuvela gama kasmende ezinlu, wango 2021, utua uslo se ukpecha umtecho la uluksebeenza, kumkomo, u kuvigela gama kasmende ezinlu.
And Housing Consumer Protection Measures Act of 1998 became effective from the 4th of June 1999. And the bill was amended for several times. And therefore, the department and the NHPRC, which is a regulatory council for building industry, decided to repeal this legislation.
Lomtecho tu kaluksebeenza, ngokse mtechu eni, mtlazizi, ne kuntlangulana ga 1999. Usukpechi yelo i kates nini, yelo mtecho la uluksebeenza, kumkomo, u kuvigela wa gama kasmende ezinlu.
To this end, the bill seeks to ensure adequate protection of housing consumers and effectively regulation of the home building industry. Intaalia strengthening the regulatory mechanism, strengthening the protection of housing consumers, introducing effective enforcement mechanism and prescribing appropriate penalty or sanction to deter non-compliance by the home builders.
Lomtecho esvivinyo, skulumanga wana mtsange, uslo se ukpeku, u kutimtsinzego ya kona, yeha hambi sana ine, mtecho ebekiwe, besu peka futu, kutu yaba vigeela yini, labo abatola ezinlu, upinde futu ushawuli ise labo abanga wenzii, okfanele wenzu umtecho.
In addition, the bill seeks to address the economic transformation of the industry through the introduction of the provision relating to the warranty funds surplus, which may be utilized towards developmental programs for the whole home building industry.
Upinde futu, wana lomtecho fana wesvige, lupindu peku kutama kasmende, ayavigelege yini, ngendelela efane lokfanele avigelege ngawa, futu lomtecho uyakensegi sa inu, u tii infuuno esfuuno umtecho, sia lande.
The bill seeks to create an enabling environment for the new entrance into the home building industry through the introduction of contractual provisions that ensure there is sustainability in the market.
Ofuna futu peku, u kuti ngabuximani iswa, umakozwa kule mtecho ezinlu, ku yenzege yini, upinde futu peku, u kuti ingabe abantu, ma betola lenzela, yoktola kweezinlu, nabo bayakwazi, nukpepa bavigelege kukon.
The bill further seeks to align and create synergy with other relevant pieces of legislation such as the Public Finance Management Act of 1999 and the Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000.
Upinde futu lomtecho upege, u guti ingabinda ba ukpato kuzmali, zalomtecho ukpato kuzmali wangonyaga 1999, na wofuti uyalandelu yini, ngoba ofuna ukini sukambisa, pagati kule mtecho ekona ebekiwe.
The summary of the provision of the bill is as follows. Chapter 1 of the bill deals with the definition, application of the act and the application of Public Finance Management Act of the council, to the council.
Uma, ne upeka lomtecho zvivinyo, lapika lini ukazinhloso yao, u guti yini inhloso yao ngamazwibela, u kutuhlose ninge mbela, kanyene mtecho ebekiwe sebeenza yo, ekazayo ngalo mtecho zvivinyo, gama kasmende ezinlu.
The bill makes provision for inter alia the definition of the bill to expand the protection afforded housing consumers by including the repairs, renovation, alteration and addition to an existing home under the council's regulatory regime.
Upinde futu, ubandaga anye, u lungi iswa kwa azoe ezinlu, uma tingega zlungi iswe ezishinchoe, lomtecho lupindu bandaga anye zonke lezo zinto, ezitinda je, abantu abasuge benga gama kasmende ezinlu.
The scope of the application of the legislation is extended to include not only the builders who undertake home building as a business but also owners builders. Owners builders are included in the definition of the home builders and are required to register with the council.
Manje lomtecho, uma se upega ge uyalulega, u tinji nje kpega abate ngibe ezinlu, godupindu tinde nabantaba zakaya ba kibazo ezinlu, ngogwazo, jongo abessebeenzis.
Chapter 2 of the bill seeks to provide for the continuation of the council established in terms of section 2 of the act as a jurisdiction persons to be known as the National Home Building Regulatory Council. It further seeks to provide for the objective of the council governance and the structure of the council.
Lomtecho ge wesbilo yingane tu, kulu lomtecho zvivinyo wetu, jongo basu ubonala, pupindu kaze inazelo yowaka ngogwayo, ipinde ye nabele nasosizweni, olusugel tolakala vigeela, abaninigazi bezinlu, lupinde futu, ubandaga anye, noglungi iswa, kwako, oksugeting wenzii.
Chapter 3 of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of home builders and developers, the establishment of a register of home builders, the requirements of the registration, the suspension of the registration, the grading of a home builders and the liability of an unregistered home builders or developers.
Uma se ubuka ge isngane ischatiya lomtecho zvivinyo ge manje, se yitindu ukpalisa ge manje, kwabo bonke abajabasuge benga wambikaza, kulezi, ezitinda ezinlu, kupindsego u guti nabo, ngogwabo bayaktolu kuvigelege yini, ngapantswa lomtecho eskuluma ngao, mtecho zvivinyo, u kuvigela gama kasmende.
Chapter 4 of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of the register of enrollment, the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by the home builders, consequences for failure to enroll a home, duties in respect of a subsidy housing project and the consequences of the failure by the member of the executive council or member of the mayoral committee responsible for human settlement, a social housing institution or a subsidy housing delivery agent to comply with the provision of the act.
Manje lomtecho ge esgabase sinesa o, manje, sespega u guti, ingabe la ba pete manja, ba kona, ingabe boonage manje, bayahambi sana inu, ma benze ngokvumelana, kanyina wolo mtecho zvivinyo, eskuluma ngao, ogngacho u guti nabo, okfanele balandi, se obagune moza, bantaba funa u ikonda, etinda lomtecho zvivinyo, ukpateleni nogpalisa ge manje.
Chapter 5 of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty funds, additional funding through money appropriated by Parliament as the council's regulatory mandate is a public function, the establishment of a non-profit company, management of the funds, the fees of the council, commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and the minimum amount payable from the warranty funds, claims and limitations.
Lapaga se uinda ba izmali ge manje, esukeziko kwa, jongo ba kufagwa iztelo, uzeziko kelo lezo izmali, u bonu kuti kwa zonage naso ziyaguazi, nuksebeenza, ngendelele fanele, kupewa, uma tingega, uglandelela, u bonu kuti izmali esukezikishiwe, sebeenza, ngendelela, oguiyo yee.
Chapter 6 of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of services to build a home which form part of the subsidy housing project from a home builder who is not registered with the council, relies on a home that was not enrolled with the council in his tender submission, who previously failed to rectify or complete the rectification of the structural defect as directed by the council without responsible ground or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlements.
Lesis gaba ge manje zonage, sespegelela abaki, abanga funu ukpalisa, nama bangazange bapali, se ngendelele fanele, okfanele wenzu wengayo, manje sia banginda, u kutu bangawenzii loko, uma be wenza, bangazitoli mtsomulo, okfanele itolo, ngakositlilenge gakulwana, kulabo bapalisie, abasuge singati, abanga mtecho, ngoba basuge benga palsie.
Chapter 7 of the bill seeks to provide for the enforcement of the provision of the bill once enacted. It also seeks to provide for the appointment and the duties of inspectors, the establishment and powers of the compliance and enforcement committees, matters related to the administrative and substantive non-compliance and penalties relating the... The chapter further seeks to provide alternative dispute resolution, criminal offence and sanctions.
Agie lesis gaba seven, manje ge zonage, ma sespegelela kakulu ge manje, u isjesi so esna sestolo, ilabo bangalandeleli loku, sepege futu kuti kuya poteleluwa yini, u landeluwa umtecho osuge ubekiwe, otinda wana lomtecho zvivinyo, ngakokbaligi, u kuti kube konisgabes, jalo, esipegelela ugla leluwa, noktochelewa umtecho.
Chapter 8 of the bill seeks to provide for various matters include the home builders' home building manual, the making of the rules by the council and of the regulations by the minister, the recovery of the fees, the carriers' liabilities, the personal liability of the member, director trustees of a home builder, duties of the estate agency, financial institution, conveyancers, the code of... Sorry, the code of conduct for the council members, home builders, developers and other industry role players. This chapter also deals with the transitional matters.
Manje lesis gaba ge sesbandaga anye, zintez ninge ezikona ngapantswa so, besespega u guti ngazinye zalezi gaba, abantu ba tindegaayo, abantu abalandelela ogwenze gayo, u guti bonke, nje ngoba sebechangene, ingabe nabo, bonke futu bayaklalela yini, oksugekshiwe.
On economic employment and infrastructure development, as noted above, the bill seeks to provide for the warranty fund surplus to be utilized towards transformative human settlements, developmental program which facilitate growth, skills development and economic transformation in the home building industry.
Jongo ba ngene inhlelo ge lapas, ukutugi sa ge manje, ma kono, ukutugi iswa uluksebeenza, lesis gaba, spagelela loko ge u guti, ingabe lesinto, empagatin sia tutugi iswa yini, zitutugele pambili.
The bill seeks to provide emergency home builders greater access and a protection through equitable registration requirement, a grading system, the regulation of the certain contractual matters and continuation development and training. The proposed provision covering the contractual matters between the home builders, developers, employees are meant to contribute towards the sustainability of the emerging home buildings and the growth of the home building industry.
Ufanele, kupewa ge manje, u guti abaki, abaninigazi, abate ngai ezinlu, abazu tutugi sa yo, bonke, uma wenzii wisvumeluano pansi inkontilega, ezesukezizo wenziuwa, ezitinda loko, ingabe nabo, ngogwabo bayakichobela yini futu lomtecho, si vivinyo, kuliwa ngao, ngakona wofuti, utinda zonke lezi, zikaba, esusanda kuzbala.
That is the summary of the bill.
Lana nje, bengama zwibela, alomtecho si vivi.
Now, we are going to allow you as communities to make inputs because your input is very much important to strengthen this bill.
Manje so vumela ninage, nje ngamalu ngumpaga, tukuti nani niposisanla, dibene ekalelo, ngoba, emzo kusho, kuballega kulu kule mtecho si vivi.
Protection services, I don't have my chairs on the middle.
Agie spagelela abapegelela, lapinda u kuvigelege, u guti yakfunye gubeneyisalo, lapo kandwa kona.
Protection services, I need the chairs, that of the people that I'm going to appoint to come and make inputs here. They are there, they are chairs here, there are five chairs here.
Nasezi, ngapange move.
In the meantime, so I'm now going to invite members or members of the communities who wants to make inputs on the bill.
Agie, sotela gamalu ngumpaga, tyafuna ukposa esvivaneni, ezela banga pambili, azoshoge, gungo gwa lomtecho zvivinyo, eskuluma ngao.
Can I see hands, that one to speak on the bill?
Esbona ba funa kuluma, ulomtecho zvivinyo.
Number 1, number 2, number 3, number 4, number 5, number 6. I need 10 people, I'm at number 6. Number 7, number 8, number 9, number 10. Number 1 must sit here. We have only 3 minutes each to make our inputs. But before I give you the people that have appointed, we have people with disability amongst us, which I'm going to give them preference if they want to speak on the bill. Can I see if they want to speak? We can bring the mic where you are Baba, if you want to speak. Not yet, okay? Any disability person?
Uma yekona ba pila nokuba zega, pagatwetu, ibona bazoniwa kalituba, lokuluma. Ba kona, pagatwetu, abanjalo?
Says you are the last one, says you are, yes, you are the last one. You are the last one, go back. Come this way. There must be 10 here, if I have not pointed you, please leave the row because there must be 10.
Baba utena, bantaba seli lapo, ngoba uma wangakolapo, ngage ultolituba manje. Ogwa manje, kfanele ksalé, Baba utena, okala useli ngapambili.
Come closer, come closer with your chair. Come closer with your chair, come closer so that you accommodate the person there, the last person there. So you're allowed to make inputs, 3 minutes each because our intention as Parliament is to get all of you to speak if possible. But for now, we are going to give you 3 minutes. Those that have prepared submission, you're welcome just to summarize in 3 minutes and submit your submission to the table there.
Agie szenigwa, zo ituba lokuluma, krishe nje emzu zemtatu, izatsalo u guti, besna fisa u kubasonke sa, beskulumilela panjenye parlamente, ngakowuma kukonize thulozpete, obofunu kuzoze, u guziisho, ngamane nje, ukepezulu guzo, besu uza, uzozleta kulelita fula ngapa ngakweso kudla samu.
And as you've given the opportunity to speak, you must indicate your name, whether you support the bill or you reject the bill.
Omopendula, okala okfanele uscheli gamalako, beso kusbilusho u guti, lomtecho zvivinyo ge uyausegela yini, nama ausegilti.
That's it, number 1, 3 minutes, start.
Greetings. Greetings, everyone. My name is Taviso Otwane, I'm a PR councilor in the Stifted Local Municipality. My submissions will be in a point form.
Sorry Baba, sorry, sorry. Can I request that we listen to the input we are recording? And if you are making noise, your voices will disturb the system. Please, if you want to speak, go out, go and speak outside and you will come back.
Sitala similelele, nje ngobe enza, isethulo, ngoba, izintezinzega lapasiya rekodwa, kodama mtsamba ma ofunu kuluma, sotelu pumelen ngapandle, uze, kunapaza msekile mshini erakodaya.
Continue Baba.
Alright, greetings once again. My name is Taviso Otwane, I'm a PR councilor in the Stifted Local Municipality. My input here will be in a point form, so for point number 1 will be, for many years, our people have complained about the quality and standard of houses without any help because of the failure of the NHRBC, which operates like a cartel. This is mainly the case with the RDP houses that were built by dishonest contractors. Point number 2, we welcome a bill that will protect homeowners from poor quality buildings through the registration of home builders dependents on the quality standards of the building. Point number 3, while we welcome the strengthening of the home warranty fund, the fund must not only be accessible to the rich building houses in suburbs and estates but also to all who are building, including in township and rural areas. Point number 4, we accept that it is difficult to apply the bill to temporary buildings, building structures forming part of informal settlement or shares. However, the decision to exclude the application of the bill to structures that do not have their own bathroom or toilet is based on misguided European misconceptions of what qualifies as a building. People in rural areas build differently to those in the city with land constraints and therefore they do not always build homes that have attached to them a toilet and bathroom or even a kitchen. Therefore, this exclusion must be removed from the bill. Point number 5, for many years, the home building construction sector has been dominated and continues to be dominated by a few whites together with NHRBC. The registration requirements appears fair but the practical implications of the stringent requirements may be used to exclude entrant home builders, who are mostly backup contractors. The use of the surplus of the home warranty fund to finance transformation measures in the industry must clearly specify that some of the funds will be used to assist black entrants with registration and this must be reported on anyone. Point number 6, failure to address clearly how the legislation will ensure that it supports the entrance of black contractors and transform the industry will only serve to create a white-owned industry presented as a way to protect homeowners. Chair, I saw submit and in my submission, I support the bill, thank you.
Thank you very much, you are a very good example, you took 2 minutes and you have made important points. Number 2.
Greetings to all in the house. My name is Tokasim Firi, PR councilor in Wat 15, here in Larnet. For many years, our people have complained about the quality and standard of houses without any help because of the failure of the NHRBC, which operates like a cartel. This mainly the case with the RDP houses that were built by dishonest contractors. Point number 2, we welcome a bill that will protect homeowners from poor quality buildings through the registration of home builders dependents on the quality standards of home building. Point number 3, while we welcome the strengthening of the home warranty fund, the fund must not only be accessible to the rich building houses, houses in suburb and estates but also to all who are building, including in township and rural areas. Point number 4, we accept that it is difficult to apply the bill to temporary...